Excuse me, could I ask staff if we're connecting to Zoom?
Well, that's interesting. There's my name.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Melissa, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Chair Clough. She excused? Thank you. Vice Chair Lawrence.
Sure.
Secretary Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Faulkner.
Here.
Commissioner Inojos Fall. Commissioner Lucero.
Here.
Commissioner Morando.
Here.
Commissioner Pava. Commissioner Toya. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Commissioner Lucero, would you lead us in the pledge? Thank you. Next is the approval of the agenda. Were there any changes from staff?
Chair Lawrence, no changes.
Thank you. Any changes from the commission? And if not, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can we have a vote?
Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Faulkner.
Yes.
Commissioner Inojos Fall.
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Commissioner Morando.
Yes.
Commissioner Pava. And so is Commissioner Toya absent this evening? Is that, or is he on Zoom? Okay, thank you. The motion has been approved.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from July 21st, 2022. Were there any changes from staff?
Chair Lawrence, no changes. Thank you.
Were there any changes from the commission? And if not, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
And can we have a vote?
Yes, I'm sorry. Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Inojos Fall?
abstained.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Great, thank you. And next, we have the approval of the findings of fact and conclusions of law in case 2022-53937261 Airport Road Development Plan. Were there any changes from staff?
Chair Lawrence, we had no changes.
Any changes from the commission? And if not, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Can I vote?
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Inojos Fall?
abstained.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
All right, we are moving on to the old business, case 2022-5063 and 2022-5064, 2200 Old Pecos Trail rezoning and 2200 Old Pecos Trail preliminary plat. We heard this case on July 21st. At that time, we had the presentation of information. We had the public hearing. The public hearing is now closed in this case. I did want to thank everyone who submitted public comment and submitted additional public comment for this hearing. We did all receive it. And I appreciate that people put in the time to provide that comment. I did want to note for the commissioners, and I think this only applies for Commissioner Faulkner for this meeting, but commissioners do need to have been present at the last hearing or reviewed all of the meeting materials and all of the minutes in order to vote in this hearing today. We did have a site visit earlier today. There were four of us in attendance. And Ms. Begali, the question had come up. I had had a question about commissioners being able to participate and vote even if they did not attend the site visit. And I was wondering if you could explain that for the record as well, please?
Chair Lawrence, commissioners, the site visit is in addition to the other information that you've received. We, you know, staff feels strongly that you have the proper information that you need in order to make the decision. The site visit was in addition. If you were not there, you're welcome to ask questions about it to staff. We were there. All of, all four of us who were up here were there today. And if you feel that you don't have enough information to make a decision, you are able to abstain, but we feel that that's adequate.
Thank you, Ms. Begali. I appreciate that. And I would also, I think, just encourage any of my fellow commissioners who were on the site visit and want to comment on their observations as part of the discussion, to please feel free to do so, so that can be part of our discussion and deliberation this evening. I want to, at this time, this is the time for discussion and questions on the part of the commission. And so I would like to turn it over to anyone who has questions that they would like to see answered or other discussion at this time. Commissioner Inojos Fall, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask Mr. Summers some questions.
Carl, Mr. Let me go ahead and store you. You swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
I was just, all right, I'm sorry. My name is Carl Summer. My mailing address is post office box 2476, Santa Fe, New Mexico. Madam Chair, I'm here to answer your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Let's just take it back to the standard that has to be met in order for you to prevail, for you and your client to prevail on the rezoning request. And there are only three exceptions, and it's my understanding that you're proceeding under only one of them. Is that correct?
Correct. And that's the policy of the, of the general plan.
All right. And that exception is what?
I don't have the exact language in economy, but I'll summarize it. It is that the rezoning is, well, let me get the exactly. It is number three, a different use category is more advantageous to the community as articulated in the general plan or other adopted city plans.
All right. And the advantageous to the community is what?
The, in addition to what we've already said in, in our, well, summarize. The general plan lays out policies that it promotes in the general plan. One of those is infill. And that infill is, this property is designated as an infill property, and that policy is further advanced by this infill project. So it is more advantageous for the community to use city infrastructure more efficiently. Also, the, the provision of additional housing, both affordable and market rate housing, are both policies that are advanced by this infill policy. So that's a summary of one policy that militates in favor of a rezoning because it is advantageous to have infill in, in the city. And, and the policy is pretty clear about infill in these locations, that it is, and I'll say, the policy states that the target density for new infill residential in order to address affordable housing goals is a minimum of five units per acre within seven. And it also talks about that that might be more dense than the surrounding neighborhood. So this policy takes that into account when it talks about being beneficial to the community. So that's one, one summary. That's a summary of the, the infill. It also, the infill policy is, it talks specifically about higher densities for future growth areas. And in, in our report and in our responses to the request for rezoning, would you like me to go through all of them?
I would.
Okay. So the infill project policy is one, the separate is the idea of the prevention of urban sprawl. The, the policy of, under the general plan of 4.4-1- L- 1 is to educate the community about the benefits of limiting sprawl and increasing residential densities. That is explicit language right out of the code and a policy about urban sprawl. And that it is more advantageous to have increased densities and no urban sprawl than it is for, to not have that, or to have urban sprawl. So that's explicit as well in the, the plan, in the general plan. Also, the general plan prioritizes land development and residential commercial building approvals in the following many. The first priority of the general plan, the policy is infill development areas. The second one is approval of development, approval developed, approval of developed areas, and third, future growth areas. So this particular policy, this particular application falls within the highest priority of the general plan's policies with respect to providing development in the city. It is of a tier one priority. The second, the, the next one is that, the, the next one is that the, the general plan has a clear policy of providing housing in the city. And it says specifically, quote unquote, "There shall be infill development at densities that support the construction of affordable housing and designated, and a designated mix of land uses that provide adequate balance of services and retail employment opportunities to address the growth throughout the urban area, including the rail yard." This rezoning will direct further, will directly further the policy, given that the rezoning will provide residential development at densities closer to the council's longstanding three to seven dwelling unit per acre found in the general plan on this property. That is what's recommended by this. So this application furthers the explicit policy in the general plan and the designation for this property. So it's in line with that policy of the general plan. I've summarized for you the policy of, it's, and I'm not just saying it's a general policy, you know, floating out there in the world. It is a policy of the general plan to promote the infill of residential in the same historical pattern as traditionally occurred to make more efficient use of existing infrastructure. So that policy is furthered by this application. It use, it uses, it makes the existing infrastructure more efficient because it utilizes it among a greater number of homes, which is a more efficient use. I think that that summarizes our position with respect to the explicit policies of the general plan and this application. Have I answered your question?
You have, but I have a follow-up question. Without the rezoning, are you not already meeting the infill policy? You're already meeting the future growth area development? You're already meeting housing. You have claimed that you are also meeting affordable housing. So the real issue here is how much can you push it?
I, I.
For another 25 homes or so.
I understand the question to be, isn't the real issue just getting more out of it?
That's right.
The answer is no, it is not, because the infill policy of the code is explicit with respect to increasing density. And the general plan recognizes a three to seven recommended general plan density for this property. We don't even reach the three, but you can't, you cannot request a zoning less than the, than what we're requesting. It is not simply a, a plan to get more units. It is a plan to produce housing that is needed in this town, including affordable housing. If, if, let's, let's assume that, that the rezoning doesn't occur, Commissioner. What, what will there be? There will be this property with nine homes, and there will be three, four fewer affordable houses, houses. And each one of these nine homes, as has been pointed out, could have on, on these, what would be larger lots now, they would each have an accessory dwelling. The lots that we proposed will not accommodate larger homes with accessory dwellings. And so in terms of the density, you will end up with fewer affordable houses and the same number of market rate homes with accessory dwellings. That is not a policy that the general plan advances.
Are you not seeking to add 25 homes?
No, we're seeking a total.
A total of 25 homes with five of those homes being affordable housing?
Correct. So without the rezoning, you will get less affordable housing, but you'll have 18 homes, one of which will be a primary residence, and the other will be a, a secondary accessory dwelling, which can be independently rented, which is not really the policy of infill. It cannot be sold separately or occupied separately, except in accordance with the city's accessory dwelling units. So the rezoning furthers very explicit policies, not just, oh, you're going to make more money. The look of this development will not be terribly different. What it, the difference will be that there will be five affordable homes in this development, whereas there will not be.
There would be three, right?
There would be two.
So 18 for two.
When I say 18, I'm saying house and accessory dwelling. I'm not saying 18 units.
It seems to me that the numbers are quite skewed in favor of not affordable housing. If you came in here and you said, well, we're going to make 10 affordable houses, that you'd be making some argument for the greater good to the community and the reasons for the infills. But that's not the argument that's being made. So I, I do, do not think that you have met your burden of proof.
I, I certainly respect your position.
Okay. Commissioner Inojos Fall, do you have anything else, or you have, does anyone else have questions or comments? Commissioner Morando, please go ahead.
I, I think if it makes sense to the vice chair, we might have Mr. Escobal speak on the exchange in terms of what the plan offers or doesn't offer for this property.
Please, would you like to ask him any specific questions?
Yeah. Could, could you follow up on the last exchange?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Mr. Morando. Carl did touch upon a few of the areas within the general plan that we also agree on. The majority of, or the main focus for us was the fact that the governing body through the general plan had already targeted this area as a low-density area. So it was out of sync with the current general plan. Since the city doesn't typically zone property, we are driven by development. We don't build anything. And therefore, when an application comes in, we will force it to comply with the regulations and force it to do any kind of infrastructure needs that are needed in order to mitigate any of the impacts within that area. Since this was already annexed in as a one-acre zone when it got annexed, in 1997, that changed with the general plan. The governing body adopted low-density residential for this, not very-low-density residential. So that moved it from a density of requiring only one to three units per acre to three to seven units per acre. The applicant to us is only coming into compliance with the general plan and with the governing body adopted for that area, along with those key features that were presented by the applicant just now. Now, in terms of affordable, affordable housing, I was just informed by Ms. Ladd that at nine dwelling units, they would not trigger affordable housing, but they could and probably would pay a fee in lieu of, so you would not get affordable housing with a nine-dwelling-unit subdivision. I hope I've answered your question.
So first part of it, on the affordable housing basis, we'd actually be looking at five or none, probably. Or five or in lieu, it sounds like.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Morando, the ordinance allows for a project of 10 or fewer units to pay a small project fee. So at nine units, they would be able to pay the fee.
Thank you.
Sorry for interrupting, Chair Lawrence. Pilar Faulkner has her hand up. Just wanted to make you. Commissioner Morando, did you have any further questions at this time? Commissioner Faulkner, please go ahead. Can I mute?
Yeah, so I just wanted to point out that one of the issues we have in Santa Fe is that we seem to be okay with infill in certain districts and not okay with it in others. And in order to meet the needs of our affordable housing, as well as our market housing demands, the entire city is going to have to do some of the lifting on infill. And I think this, I actually applaud this project in the sense that they could have chosen to do in lieu of, and they could have chosen to do bigger lots that they could have sold for the high end of the market value. And those lots would have, I agree with Mr. Summers, they would have definitely had auxiliary units. And you would have had lots that in fact kind of would fly in the face of our needs. There would just be more higher-value homes instead of more market value and affordable homes. And so I, I do feel very strongly, my district gets a lot of infill, and I feel like it's, it's, it's time for other districts to recognize that if we all truly care about affordable housing, then the whole city has to do some of the lifting. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Faulkner. Anyone else? Commissioner Morando, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd also, I was just informed that there's no fee in lieu for individual houses. It's a project based at fee in, fee in lieu. And at nine dwelling units, they have the ability to provide the fee in lieu. But as an individual owner, tenant, landowner, that is not an option for them. The other thing I'd like to also add and correct is that guest houses, guest houses are a lot on every legal lot of record within the city of Santa Fe. You have to meet the infrastructure requirements, not necessarily just because there's not enough room. There are many houses out there that build a house and split it, and then you have what looks like a duplex, but in reality, we permit one side as a guest house and the other side as a dwelling. That does happen. So they're permitted as an accessory dwelling. Accessory dwelling units are not calculated for density in chapter 14. So they don't get included in the density calculations just because you have a house and guest house. The only calculation that's made is for the dwelling unit itself. Any accessory structure, whether that's a shed, a guest house, a garage, those are not calculated for density.
Mr. Morando, are you finished for now? Mr. Pava, please go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd like to address Mr. Escobal. Mr. Escobal, with clarification on accessory dwelling units, which are allowed in all our zones, where, where they meet the criteria for setbacks and lot coverage, whatnot. Are we aware in this proposal somewhere, a note on the preliminary plat, that there is a reference to a covenant that says in fact, de facto, no, no accessory dwelling units as defined in chapter 14 will be permitted?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Pava, I am not aware of a condition like that, and staff would not be able to provide that since it's an allowance within chapter 14. If that were to occur, it would have to be offered up by the applicant and discussed with the applicants and the planning commission so that we would be able to put a note on the plat if it were accepted. And that would then, we would be monitoring that plat for building permit that comes in for construction. But outside of that, I'm not aware of that.
Go ahead, Mr. Pava. I think you have a follow-up?
Yeah, I, I, I think maybe the applicant's representative may want to provide perspective on this or some information I'm not aware of.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pava, yes. The, these lots, as, as you all have seen in the staff report and in the code, these lots have a 50%, the lot itself has a 50% open space requirement. So you have a limitation on lot coverage of 40% and a limitation of 50%. So when I say to you, houses that are built on these lots are not going to be your house and guest house setup. There is simply not enough room on these lots for that. And I suspect that the policy of the code was to keep open space. So we have the 75-foot setback, building setback, and then each lot has its own requirement of 50% open space. So, and a total limitation of lot coverage of 40%. So there is 10% for driveways, garages, and that sort of thing. So that's the representation, and that's what the, the, the meaning of what I said was.
Thank you for that additional context. That's, that's helpful.
Mr. Escobal, did you have something else on that?
Yeah, I'd just like to make one correction. The lots up against Old Pecos Trail, they are designed, if you look on your memo, they are designed as one lot that connects with the I-25. are designed as one lot that connects with the I-25 boundary line. So, the lot and the right-of-way are, they're part of the same. So, against those lots, the fifty percent requirement is sort of overlaid with that setback. So, they can act in, in essence, as the same. It's not a matter of you get a seventy-five percent, seventy-five-foot setback, and then you have to add fifty percent from that point forward. For some of the other lots that don't have that seventy-five-foot setback, yes, they have a fifty percent limitation for construction. But for those lots up against the corridor, there is seventy-five feet, which is going to be a percentage of that lot, and then you have fifty percent of that lot, which is also going to be part of that seventy-five feet. So, those lots are large enough, and some accessory structures may be allowed. And again, a single-family dwelling, a large enough structure, good house, and it's very common where you have a house and a mother-in-law's quarter attached to the house, which to us is nothing more than a house and guesthouse, or a house and accessory structure attached as opposed to detached. So, the configuration is available if they choose to do it. It does get somewhat complicated for some of the smaller lots and more difficult because of the constraints, but it's not impossible.
Thank you, Mr. Escobal. One follow-on to that is when I asked at the, at the July 21 hearing about parking, on-street parking, we've got twenty-five single-family homes here. And I know they're meeting the requirement with the, you've got a nice two-car garage probably and a driveway. My question is really, how many on-street parking spaces are there with the proposed innovative street design? Because in context, again, sir, I'm looking at Pecos Trail and Zia, there's absolutely no place, nobody's going to park, nobody's going to go park across the street and try to cross Old Pecos Trail and whatnot. So, I think this is a very important point.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Pava, unfortunately, I did not count those additional parking spaces since they were in overage. I'd have to defer that to the applicant.
It looks like maybe the applicant can answer that question. Can you answer that quickly, please?
Yes. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
It's, oh, Orlin Gedet Ortiz. My office is at 1421 Luisa Street here in town. And it, the answer is thirteen. There's thirteen on-street parking in the design currently.
Thank you for that information, clarification.
Commissioner Pava, did you have any further questions at this point?
No, no, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Does anyone here have, Commissioner Lucero, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm a bit worried about this development looking grossly overbuilt in comparison to the surrounding neighborhood. I wonder if you could speak to the efforts being made to minimize the impact on the surrounding neighborhood and the natural environment? And I'm speaking about like retaining walls and walls between properties and things of, things of that nature.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Mr. Lucero, I guess I would ask you to clarify that just a little bit more so I understand your question. If I, if I'm asking right, you're wondering if there are conditions or covenants within the subdivision that prohibit certain types of accessory features such as walls and fences that would water up the area against the neighbors and provide, and eliminate that sense of openness? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, what I'm seeing is I don't see in the plans, walls, like retaining walls around property lines, things, things of that nature. I know that's not commonplace in that neighborhood, and so my worry is that if the development comes up and it's built here, and it has these sorts of features that aren't commonplace in that neighborhood, it could look grossly overbuilt. So, I'm just wondering if you could clarify what the, what the plan is.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Lucero, that is actually an option that the applicant has not provided to the city. It is an allowance within Chapter 14, since these are custom, these are individual lots for custom homes, in which case that developer, that lot owner, could put up a wall, could put up a fence if they so choose. We are obligated to follow the code, and each legal lot of record would be allowed all of the infrastructure requirements pertinent to that section that they're building. We would not be able to stop that.
Thank you. I wonder if you could speak a little bit about just some of the efforts being made to kind of blend in with the surrounding neighborhood? I mean, build around trees, build around natural features, those kinds of things. Have, have those kinds of things been taken into account?
No. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Lucero, those are not part of this subdivision, since it's a preliminary subdivision for a division only. It does not trigger development plans, so that we do not have that kind of authority or regulatory means to actually look at the architecture of each, of the subdivision as it comes in. So, at twenty-five lots, it is a very small subdivision, and it doesn't trigger a development plan, neither does the zoning, so they don't have to provide one.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lucero, I did see Ms. Guerrero tears with the applicant, I think is indicating that she has something to say on this topic, if you would like to entertain what she has to say.
Definitely.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention a couple of things from discussions with the neighborhood. Some of the additional parameters that we've included in our designs have been additional setbacks along the boundary on our west side, where we have some houses that were, our backyards will face their backyard. So, we've, the code requires fifteen feet, we pushed it to twenty-five. The other thing we agreed to is only single, or single-story buildings. And so, I, as I understand that, with a pitched roof, it could be up to eighteen, with a flat roof, it'll be fourteen. There was, covenants agreed to that we would follow traditional Santa Fe styles, and we would have strict covenant controls on colors and things like that. Another issue was the neighborhood was concerned about the wildlife corridor. We had a plan originally where we were going to bridge it and, with a culvert, which would be problematic to some animals, because culvert sizes are, were, the numbers actually weren't showing a need for really big culvert. So, we changed our design, and we're like leaving that as permanent open space, so that's open for them, for the animals. And I think those were the big ones. I mean, we're building sidewalks and other things that'll benefit the neighborhood, too. But I think those were the big ones that I recall. And I'm sorry, Monica's not here for us, because she was really on top of those issues. Thank you.
Commissioner Lucero, are you complete?
Yes, all permission, thank you.
Commissioner Hinozawa, please go ahead.
I have a couple of follow-up questions for Mr. Summers. Mr. Summers, I don't suppose you can a priori waive for your clients the right to come back and ask for a two-story variance, can you? Or are you? Would be wonderful if you would.
I, what I, what, what we're proposing, we would accept as a condition of approval on your development plan, not, it wouldn't be just, you know, we could simply, you know, do whatever we wanted. The condition of approval on the development plan, as just described by Ms. Gedet Ortiz, would be acceptable to us, and that it would have the force of, of an enforceable regulation on this development as part of this subdivision. And you're correct, I, I, I don't have Mr. Amossoy's authority right now, but I, I do assure you that if it shows up on this plat, it is an enforceable regulation, and it would require you all to change that if somebody wanted to change it. They couldn't just say, well, it's not in the code. If we accept it as a condition, it is a condition.
All right. And the second question is regarding the market. What is, what is the price, the average price projected on those homes? What is the market rate?
We, we haven't projected what people are going to be buying or selling houses. We're just doing the development of the, the lots, and we haven't projected home prices. I can, and Ms. Ladd can talk specifically about what the home prices would be for affordable housing. You had asked about that specifically, she could pin that down specifically, but we don't have projected home prices, because that's not what we're doing right now.
Right. But generally speaking, can't we not agree that the homes, any homes in that vicinity are going to be seven hundred up? They are now.
You know, I honestly don't know the answer to that. Unlike you, I read the paper. In fact, I, I live in the neighborhood across the street. So, the value of homes is along Sebastián and over on your old side is looking like it's anywhere from six fifty, depending upon the size of the house, up to nine hundred thousand, depending upon that size of the house. So, I think that what you just represented, it, just from my layperson's point of view, is that that is going to be probably the range of homes.
You see, that's what is the concern for me, because seven hundred to a million is not a market-rate home for the average Santa Fe person. I'm not talking about looking for affordable housing. I'm talking about all the state workers. I'm talking about all those folks that make fifty to sixty to maybe even seventy a year. This is not market housing. This, this can't, you can't stand here and represent that those homes are addressing a need of the existing population of Santa Fe that is such a need of finding housing, where they can raise their families, where they can actually put down a down payment and own a home. These, these houses are not for them.
And I certainly can appreciate your point of view about that. The entire Soliloamous neighborhood suffers from what you just said. The, the value of homes there has gone through the ceiling, and it is not an affordable place for workforce housing, as you've described it. That neighborhood is not. Keeping the density at R1 isn't going to help that situation.
Chair, did you have anything else?
That's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions or comments? Commissioner Smith?
Pardon me, because I'm sort of new to this and may not have the smartest questions in the world, but I really want to thank the commission for postponing this, because it gave me a chance to go back and read all the public comments. So, I have just a series of clarifying questions, and then a couple of questions aimed at making sure I understand what we're, what, what you've said in a couple of cases, because you're, you're a planner and I'm not, so I need to make sure of the meaning. First of all, there was a comment, so I had several points from large to small to maybe name, who knows? There was one comment made last meeting, the City Council Resolution 201592 gives explicit direction to Land Use Department staff to immediately convene, reconvene a public process to develop standards for the Old Pecos Trail senior corridor. And that was building on an earlier one from 1995, and about which nothing had been done. And so, the assertion was, and to present those standards to the, to the governing body for adoption into the city's land use code. The assertion is that these directives were not carried out, and the job that the then Land Use staff was asked to do and complete was not performed. Is that, is that an accurate statement of the history of, of City Council Resolution 21592?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Smith, my understanding in talking with Maggie, who's done a lot more research than I have on this, is that it has been attempted in the past through different administrations, and it was not completed for whatever reason. I believe it had task forces on both sides when they were discussed, and it was trying to move forward, but for whatever reason, it never got adopted as an ordinance, and it's not an ordinance today. So, it's still in that resolution form, and that's, you know, we are talking about it, but you'd have to talk with Maggie more on what those plans are.
Without going to the quality of this proposal, that, I have to say, that's of great concern to me. Two governing bodies that ask for something, it's been outstanding for more than twenty-five, seventeen or eighteen years, whatever, no, twenty-two or twenty-three years. That's, that's of great concern to me. I was not clear about the, the open space density, the open space questions. It's fifty percent, and then, as Summers said, forty and ten, and ten for garages and driveways. Is that keeping with, so, there's forty percent open space the way I would think about it, grass, trees, whatever, and ten percent of that open space, so-called, is garage and/or driveway? Is that within appropriate city codes or whatever the right language is?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Smith, I'm not sure how that was broken down. I can tell you how it's applied. Chapter 14, I think it's 14/7 within the design standards, for all the residential density, or the residential districts, you're allowed to build between the R7 and R, I mean, the R1 and R9, you're, or, I think it's nine, R9, you're allowed to have fifty percent lot coverage. When you trigger forty percent lot coverage, it requires open space to be included on your lot. That open space must be attached through an entryway into the house, and it must have a slope that is not greater than one in ten. The area that it requires, or the dimensional standards, are twelve feet in every direction. So, it's, it's a larger area, the, well, I mean, add to that, the size of the open space is based on the, the square footage of the dwelling unit, and that is fifty percent of that dwelling unit. So, if you, if you have, let's say, a house, a garage, a shed, and you're on a small lot, R1 through R9, then we're going to look at all of that roofed area. And if we trigger forty percent, if you have a 2,000-square-foot house, you will be required to put 1,000 square feet of open space that must meet those dimensional standards. Now, driveways, the ponding area, all of that has to fit within the lot, but they don't require additional open space simply because they're development on the lot. Those, those don't get included. The only open space that we include are all those areas that are based on roofed, roofed areas. So, if you have a lattice-type roof, that is not a roof, that would not get calculated. But any real roof, hard surface, that would get calculated, and we aggregate it, and you're required to put it in.
Oh, I mean, I'm still, I'm slow, I guess. Does the square footage of a driveway count as open space?
Uh, no.
One of the assertions was the driveways were being included as open space in the calculations. Are you aware of that, or is that an inaccurate statement?
Well, that's a good question.
Thank you.
Because in a regular, outside of the South Central Highway Corridor residential lot, driveways and ponding areas, your parking, those are not included and can't be included in the open space. However, that limitation is not found in the South Central Highway Corridor for the required fifty percent open space per lot. So, one could argue that you could have your terrain management requirements within that fifty percent open space. One could argue that the driveway could be in your open space, because it's not specified. It doesn't define whether it's private open space or common open space, which in Chapter 14 has design standards for how we're to build it, how we're to accept it, and how it's to be designed on the property. The South Central Highway Corridor is nonspecific because it doesn't trigger private or common open space. It's assumed private, since it's part of the underlying lot owned by the, by the property, but it's not defined as private. but it's not defined as private.
Would it be a reasonable surmise that if the direction to the department staff to reconvene the public process to develop standards and that had been completed, that this issue might have been addressed, among others?
Can you say that again?
I'm not sure I can. The first point I made about the corridor study that has twice been failed over a 22-year period or whatever it is, to a 27-year period to be completed, had it been completed, issues like that might have been addressed in it.
I don't know if the corridor standards would have, would have addressed those issues, particularly since I wasn't part of those conversations or the makeup of the discussion. I'm aware of the second attempt to establish an ordinance only because the staff involved was in the office at the time I was. The initial meetings that occurred, occurred, I wasn't about, I wasn't around, I guess. And my understanding is it kind of died when there was a request to incorporate a no-build zone that was 600 feet from the right-of-way. That would have been a taking, we cannot do that. So, it came to a stop. In terms of design standards for that open space, it could have its own design standards as part of what would be that corridor requirement that would lay on top or aside to the South Central Highway Corridor requirements. The South Central Highway Corridor is an adopted ordinance, we follow that. And the, the visual corridor is still in resolution form and it's unenforceable. It would be arbitrary and capricious for us to actually go in there and design up rules specific for everybody that are not in place or adopted by the governing body. So, we can't, we can't provide, we can try to, for instance, we would like a condition that if fences are to be built up against that corridor, that, that South Central Highway Corridor 75-foot setback, to be split-rail. We believe that that provides a sense of openness, trying to keep with the intent of what the general plan is trying to achieve as, as we want to preserve that area based on what the governing body wants. But that's not a requirement of Chapter 14. That is a staff condition that we are requesting the Planning Commission consider. But in terms of anything else associated with that corridor, it would be really hard to come up with reasonable conditions of approval that don't look like they're just arbitrary and capricious.
I have some other questions, but I, I'd be happy to be quiet for a while if other people have some questions.
Well, can I just ask a follow-up to that? Well, he just...
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Well, but this is all speculation, Mr. Escobar. If, in fact, the first issue had been looked at, then we'd have the answers as to how to proceed. It would not be arbitrary and capricious because there would have been a rule set forth by which we can then apply to whatever development request is being made, correct?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, had there been a rule, we would be enforcing that rule, but there is no rule, so we can't enforce anything associated with that. I believe that Maggie would like to add further to the issue.
Chair Lawrence and members of the Planning Commission, I did do a little diving into the files to try to find out what efforts were made in the near and distant past to pursue a, you know, Old Pecos Trail historic and scenic protection overlay or corridor. And what I found was that, you know, there are some original documents dating back to 1999 to 2000, 2001, following the adoption of the general plan in 1999, and working groups, draft resolutions, that sort of effort. And I wasn't in the meetings, but I know nothing came of that. So, we assume they weren't adopted for whatever reasons. And although, all the while, we have the South Central Corridor overlay. Another effort that I found, and maybe there were more, but was made following the Resolution 2015-92, that we've, you know, kind of alluded to from the governing body to, you know, directing staff to complete this process or, you know, restart it. And I did speak with my predecessor, Noah Burke, who was in charge of that effort while he was at the Land Use Department. And he said that, you know, again, they, they drafted ordinances, they had multiple meetings, they had a designated working group of some people that are here tonight, you know, that were a part of this from 20 years ago. And again, nothing came of it. I think Dan Escobal alluded to the request for a 600-foot setback or then a 300-foot setback. And again, those, Noah confirmed that all of the recommendations or suggestions from the public were vetted through the Land Use Department, were vetted through the legal department at that time in 2016, 2017. And he, in a, in an update to the governing body on the South Central Corridor overlay, and there was a lot of work going on around overlays and at that time, and studies that were taking place on multiple different overlays, in a report back to the governing body, he's recalled that, you know, he said, "We've, we've come to an impasse with the working group. We have requested a response from them and that is where we are. We are waiting a response from the working group to proceed." And he said that never came. And that is where the status of, you know, from what I can surmise from our files, you know, what that status is. All along, we have the South Central Highway Corridor, which is an adopted ordinance and that is what we follow.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Commissioner Henoasfahl, did you have any follow-up on that? Commissioner Smith, would you like to continue?
Madam Chair, thank you. Am I correct in inferring from what I think Mr. Summers said, that the architecture will be traditional Santa Fe style, whatever that means? I think we all...
Mr. Chair, I think that was the engineer as well that said that they were going to follow the Santa Fe style theme.
And that the houses will be single-story with a flat roof?
Ladder pitched.
Oh, okay. And can we, can I be clear on accessory structures? I heard, I think in the end of the day, that some of the lots might be big enough to have an accessory structure and some might not. And that that would, do we have any way of estimating because that takes 25 and turns it into 35 or 40 or 45 structures?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Commissioner Smith, unfortunately, since these are custom lots, it would be kind of hard to determine what's going to be built on there size-wise and what's available for the balance of that lot for any kind of accessory structure. It is limited by the 50%, so that defines what is going to be established. It would still, you know, the interesting part of that is all of the residential developments that I have discussed, with the exception of the multifamily residential developments that allow you up to 55%, all of the residential developments, 1 through 9, max out at 50%. So, that means that every lot in the city of Santa Fe, R1, whatever, they're going to max out at 50% that is within those zoning categories. When you trigger 40%, you're going to automatically have to include additional open space. Because if you're already limited to 50% of the lot, then every lot is limited to 50% of the lot. The difference being is a lot of the lot can be used in different means, that open space can be utilized in different ways. Where in this particular overlay, it doesn't say you can have this here, that there, and your open space can be somewhat mismatched as long as, as long as you meet these standards. Here, it's a flat 50%. So, we know that 50% of each lot is not going to be developable, leaving 50% to develop. Now, when they reach 40% lot coverage, they have to include an additional open space, which is 50% of that dwelling unit's square footage. You're going to get more open space than typically is, that's just the way the numbers work across the board. So, it will be limited in its development just by, just by the math of every lot and the ordinances that are, that are driving that math.
Thank you. Going to Commissioner Faulkman's point about spreading the infill, which I completely agree with, with building on what Commissioner Henoasfahl said, my understanding, so we've generally agreed that the housing here would probably be between 7 and 100 and a million, or something in there, or more, not less. There was a statement made at the last meeting, an assertion that defining affordable would be derived from the neighborhood within which the development was occurring, within half an hour, within half a mile or something. I don't, is that, is that an accurate assertion or is, how is affordable determined relative to the rest of the development?
I think I'll defer that question to Alexandra Lad, who's an expert in that field and I'm not.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Smith, the affordable housing prices are set according to three different income ranges. Those income ranges are 65 to 80%, sorry, 50 to 65%, 65 to 80% and 80% to 100%. The, and, and those are 40, 50, 60, $1,000 incomes. But the assumption is that an affordable mortgage is no more than 1/3 of a homebuyer's monthly income. So, that's how, that's what determines the home sales price. And then, there are the, they are priced according to those three income ranges so that there are opportunities for a range of incomes.
So, in this case, Madam Chair, in this case, with the number of affordable houses, 1/3 of them would be in the lowest range, 1/3 in the medium range, and I'm not sure what a, the percentage of what?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Smith, it's the area median income. So, this is a statistic set by the Department of Housing and Urban Development for every jurisdiction in the country.
So, what is the area, what is the area within which the median income is determined in this case?
It would be the metropolitan area of Santa Fe. So, the entire community, the entire jurisdiction.
Well, the median, if what I read in the newspaper is accurate, and I'm not challenging you at all, I'm just trying to understand, that the median price of a home in Santa Fe is someplace in the neighborhood of 500 to 600,000 dollars?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Smith, these homes would be priced between about 200 and high 300s to be affordable to those income ranges.
Thank you, that's, there's another, thank you very much. Madam Chair, there was another assertion about a federal flood hazard management area made in the public testimony last week, a few weeks ago, the last meeting. Can you address to the extent that is or is not an issue with this development?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Commissioner Smith, the area that would be depicted as that flood zone has been removed from the developable area of the subdivision. However, to be more specific and to give you, you know, more appropriate answers, we do have our, our subdivision engineer at the ready for, to answer any question you may have if my answer is not sufficient.
If it's, you say it's removed, it's removed. I take your word. That leaves me with one other question and it hasn't been brought up unless it was when I was out of the room, having to do with the ingress and egress. And I am, one of, several assertions that were made at the last meeting were that on Zia Road, certain kinds of vehicles would not be able to turn around and come back out, they'd have to back out onto the road. And there were great concerns about the U-turn on Old Pecos, ride in, ride out, U-turn in front of the Pecos Trail or Pecos Cafe or whatever it is. Can you address those, those two things? Is it the case that certain size of truck or city vehicle would not be able to turn around in the smaller, uh, few developments?
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Commissioner Smith, that was me, that, that assertion. And the applicant has been working with other departments as well as me to address those issues so that any vehicle going into that one little cul-de-sac will be able to leave the premises forward as opposed to having to back out onto West Zia Road.
So, not resolved yet, though?
I would say it's resolved, it's just not in your packet, so...
Could someone describe it to us?
I'll have to give that to the applicant who'd have the drawings available, I do not have...
I'd hate to learn about it not being resolved next week.
Thank you, Commissioners. I modified the existing turnaround to make it work for a fire truck, a trash truck, the vector truck and everything. And I did run it by the wastewater department and the refuge department and the fire department and they all approved it. It'll be showing up in the next time we come before you for final plat, but it's, it didn't affect the lots, it just went into, well, it did affect a lot a little bit, so. But anyway, it was one of the bigger lots and then we went into a little bit of what was already a sewer easement to build a little more of a turnaround.
Ms. Guerrero Ortiz, can you describe for us what was done? Did you expand the turnaround space? Is that how it was addressed?
Exactly. It, it's more like a T now at the end and it, it has 28-foot radiuses, so fire trucks can turn around. And if a fire truck can turn around in our community, then all the other vehicles can too.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
If someone could help, maybe Mr. Escobal. So, there's parking in both of these areas, there's 13 parking spaces on the street. How does that, I'm trying to think about traffic density, how does that compare to other developments? I mean, if you have 25 houses with two cars each and then you've got 13, it strikes me that that is in fact problematic if three people have a party on the same Friday night, someone's going to park on the lawn.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Commissioner Smith, every subdivision that is brought before this board or this commission follows the same standards for parking development for residential development, which is a minimum requirement of two parking spaces per dwelling unit. While it is true that families will grow and vehicles will be added to that household, it is also typical that some of these lots tend to be large enough in the, in the one-acre area or the third of an acre area to be able to address some of these additional parking needs. So, the additional parking required or the additional parking submitted by the applicant increases that volume that allows for more parking within that subdivision where they don't have to actually add it in order to meet the standards under Chapter 14. So, it's an addition that they added as opposed to a required standard that we forced on them. So, they're, they're meeting our code standards with just two parking spaces per lot. So they're, they're meeting our code standards with just two parking spaces per lot.
And that's the driveway?
That's on their lot, right. The driveway. So you have either two, two parking spaces on the driveway, or one parking space in a garage, and one parking space in tandem. And there have been multitude of developments that follow this standard, including apartment complexes, which tend to be a little bit lighter on the parking, at one-point-two-five and one-point-five, depending on whether or not the size of the apartment triggers that. So this is the maximum that is allowed for a single-family dwelling.
Thank you.
Or minimum, I should say.
Madam Chair, if someone, one of the new guys could explain what this vote is about versus the next vote, versus the reference that was made a few minutes ago to when they come back.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Smith, the application before this body has two components. A recommendation by this body to the governing body. That's your first motion. It's either for a rezoning or against a rezoning. The second recommendation, or, the second is not a recommendation, the second is an approval granted by this body, which is their request for preliminary subdivision plat. Now, the preliminary subdivision plat cannot have a final subdivision plat on the same meeting, because that's code restriction. They must come back for a final subdivision plat, in order for them to be able to be finally approved, and record their subdivision, file any kind of letter of credit that's required, and be able to sell lots and start construction of the infrastructure and housing development. So you will see this subdivision twice, and the rezoning once. The rezoning is a recommendation, the subdivision is preliminary approval or denial. Obviously, if you deny, they have the ability to appeal. And then if you approve, then they come back for final, and they must meet all of the preliminary requirements. Typically, if the commission has conditions of approval, and the staff has conditions of approval, the final plat will try and meet all of those standards on the plat, conditions, notes, whatever is required by the staff, and you will be able to see that final product based on the preliminary work that they did.
Other questions? Commissioner Hinoas Fall, go ahead.
Yes. If the rezoning is not approved, it's not recommended, then do we get to the approval of the preliminary subdivision plat?
That's a good question.
I mean, if there's no approval, then they'd have to go back and get the approval before they could move on to the...
You have two separate applications. One is a recommendation for the rezoning. The applicant, that's only a recommendation.
Right.
Okay. So if this body were to approve the preliminary review, and, let's go on this part. If this body were to approve a rezoning, they recommend it actually to the governing body. And if there's a developed plan or a subdivision behind that rezoning, if the planning commission approves that development plan, and approves that subdivision, they approve it with a condition subject to the governing body approving the rezoning. If the planning commission were to recommend against the rezoning, you still have the subdivision that you have to act on, because it's still a separate application. You would, obviously, for, for the recommendation you offered, you would have to, you would want to make a, a recommendation that would suit that particular subdivision, which would probably be denial. But you'd still have to render two decisions, because they have two applications.
Okay. And I have a follow-up question for Ms. Alexander, Alexandra, the affordable housing.
Go ahead, Commissioner, I see her coming down.
Okay. All right, I, I'd like some clarification. You stated that there was going to be a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house built in the subdivision? One or five?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hinoas Fall, it, there's a pricing schedule, so there will be one or two houses built in the most affordable range, two houses in the middle range, and one house in the, the higher range. So it's, the intent is to spread out the opportunities among several income ranges.
Well, I understand that, but the last statement you made was that there would be a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home there. Did I misunderstand here?
No, you did not. The most affordable home is in the two-hundred-thousand-dollar range?
It is, but there is no guarantee that it will be built at two-hundred thousand, correct?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hinoas Fall, absolutely. It is written into the agreement that the home has to be price-restricted at that range. Two, two of the homes will be in that range. It, it depends, the pricing...
That range could be two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred?
The price depends on the, the size of the home. So a one-bedroom naturally is less expensive than a three-bedroom. So we don't, we don't, at this stage, we don't know what the, what the, the house size will be, but it will be within the range of most affordable. There will be two homes in that range.
Well, lot size has already been discussed, so we can project from that the size of the home that will be built.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hinoas Fall, normally, we would project for a homeownership project, it would be a three-bedroom home, because that's a fairly standard home. But occasionally, our builders will say, for these affordable homes, I have, I have buyers in the pipeline who want two-bedroom homes, not the three-bedrooms. So we let, we do let that the needs of the actual buyers influence the size of the final home.
Okay, so the disconnect I'm having is that even Homewise presently doesn't have two-hundred-thousand-dollar homes for sale. So how do we get to two-hundred, a year, a year and a half from now, when this development is made? How do we get to a two-hundred-thousand-dollar?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Hinoas Fall, the pricing schedule's updated every year. So the, the sale of the home is, is based on what the pricing schedule is at the time that the home is under purchase contract, but it is still based on the, that year's, that year's area median income.
Well, I think we need to, as a community, start rethinking all of this. Because infill for infill's sake, that does no good to the average Santa Fe resident. On the hope and the promise that there will be a home that they may be able to afford is insufficient, in my point of view, to go ahead and rubber-stamp all of this development.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I, I see that Commissioner Faulkner has either a question or a comment. Can we get her on the line?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I have a question for staff, that's a procedural question. If the planning commission recommends denial of either of the cases related to this project, ultimately, city council has the final decision, and they could approve this project, and our denial is nothing more than a recommendation. It, it doesn't necessarily prohibit the project from moving forward.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Faulkner, the recommendation is going to move forward to the governing body if the applicant chooses to move forward if it has a negative recommendation. It would obviously move forward to the governing body with a positive recommendation. If this body were to deny the subdivision, the applicant has the right to appeal that decision to the governing body, in order to move the application along. It would, and if, depending on what the governing body does, will determine whether final comes back or not, under an appeal.
And, okay, thank you. And then, I would just like to also echo Zulema's points, related to us rethinking how we look at infill. Although I understand the need for infill, and I am definitely a supporter of infill being spread out throughout the city, I do agree that infill shouldn't be the only thing considered as, as having value to the community. A lot of these projects that are infill projects are foregoing things that are related to community development, like parks and some other items that are critical to not just building homes, but building communities. And so I do have to echo Zulema's point, that we, we do have to start rethinking this. But I, I do think we are, the intention is to address that in the revision of the general plan in Chapter fourteen. And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Faulkner. Commissioner Hinoas Fall, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to make my last comment regarding, it is the recommended decision, you're absolutely right. We're not here, in my view, cover for the city council. If the city council then wants to overturn our denial of this project, they are the elected officials. Their constituents will come back to them and let them know whether they did the right decision or the wrong decision. We're not here to behold and do our homework to provide cover for the city council. It's a recommended decision. That's not why we're getting paid. We're not getting paid at all. We're not getting paid at all, and we're here until midnight. So, in my view, I'm listening to the folks on the, puts on the ground. I don't see anybody that shows up, and yes, we do have to take into consideration, who shows up to these meetings to talk. Because if the general community in desperate need of housing saw this of value to them, they would have shown up in droves. The people of Santa Fe are well-educated and well-informed, and they would have been here, but they weren't. So, if I vote against it, and the city council wants to vote for it, that's fine. That's why they're elected officials. And the fact that, nothing's been done about this, with all the task forces about the corridors, the Pecos scenic corridor, it doesn't surprise me. We shouldn't read anything into that. The city council was unable to find a way to hang the veterans' posters along Cerejo, until the governor stepped in and did it for them, where they could be done. So, city council, go ahead, take some responsibility, and listen to your constituents, because I'm listening to them.
Commissioner Pava?
Kind of a statement question, Mr. Escobillo. Thank you, Madam Chair. Isn't there a Goldilocks zone in the Chapter fourteen? And what I mean by that, it's not too hot, it's not too cold, it's not too high, it's not too ugly, it might be even nice, a nice habitable, like the planet, like Earth is in a Goldilocks zone. Isn't there a planned unit development zone that is designed, the intent in our code, to take into consideration, oh, I don't know, three-hundred pages of public comment, and kind of adjudicate that against what the code requirements? So you end up with a development that might have more than thirteen long-street parking spaces, you end up with a development that is required to have certain design standards, and so on. Isn't there a development right next door to this develop, this proposal, that actually took advantage of that? The late Mr. Chapman developed it, I believe, and, and I, I'm really not asking a question, as you can see. But isn't there a planned unit development zone that, that although staff can't advocate, maybe commissioners could?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Pava, the application that is presented by the applicant is up to the applicant. If the applicant didn't request a planned unit development of PUD, then we're just left with the rezoning and the subdivision. The staff is going to look at both applications pertinent to the findings that were required to. The body that is reviewing it and making recommendations or approval must take into consideration those findings from staff, the requests from the applicant, and the comments presented by the general public, that is part of the quasi-judicial process in this hearing. It is your determination that decides whether or not they've met those findings, the general plan, the rezoning, those requirements. They're a little bit more mushy than the subdivision standards, which are, it's like a math problem, you've just got to meet those standards, and, you know, you're, you're, like a building permit, you meet those standards, you get a building permit. The rezoning, it's a little bit harder to, to meander, because it, it has a lot more subjective qualities to it that you must weigh in order to achieve your recommendation, either for or against, through that governing body. The Goldilocks zone, I have not seen it. I think a PUD may have allowed for some massaging of the rules, but I have, I know that, I don't know how much of a massage could have done here. We did talk with the applicant, I believe it was Heather Lamboy that asked if they would be willing to, to carve off that seventy-five-foot setback and just make it open space instead of making it part of that lot. Now, that has some consequences, because it reduces the size of those lots up against that corridor. That is an option that she, she requested, however, that is not an option that we can force on the applicant. It's up to them to, to make those kinds of choices. Because the PUD is not applied for, if they carved that out, they would still have a fifty percent requirement on each of those lots, so they'd just get smaller. We couldn't transfer that over, because the PUD would have allowed us to transfer that over to make it a more usable and friendly or developable lot. It would still be subject to those restrictive requirements, even if they carved that area out. But, I don't know if I've answered your question. I've not seen any kind of Goldilocks application that's come in. I've seen a lot of good applications that have done really good designs, but they are also starting with a much larger lot, and this body's been a part of that, and you've seen many of those applications that have come through.
Thank you, Mr. Escobillo. I, I want to thank you personally, and city staff, for all the diligence and the research into the corridor development standards and the saga of that. I want to thank the members of the public that have invested a great deal of their time in expressing their opinions here and elsewhere. And I'd like to ask for a point of order, to, thank you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Pagali. If, if, if one makes a motion this evening, I motion to approve blah, 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 need one vote in that manner, or simply is that procedural?
Chair Lawrence, Commissioners, you can, you can make a motion for whatever you'd like, you do not need to then vote in favor of that motion. It does need a second, but neither the person making the motion nor the second needs to vote in favor of that motion.
Thank you, Ms. Pagali. May I suggest that we make a motion, or, Commissioners?
Sorry, I have one other follow-up question. We were talking about ingress and egress, and we got, we did the Zia Road, but I'm interested in just knowing what the final situation is going to be with the U-turn, and are there going to be extra lanes, and, but, what is, where is it going to be? I think I know the answer to the, the last question, but it was cited as a significant problem by many, many people, and I'm...
Sure. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Smith, I'd have to turn that over to our engineering division, our traffic engineering. I believe that Leroy Pacheco is online, waiting to be questioned, and then the applicant's engineer is also here, who can further address any needs that you have on that question. Oh, he's here, wow.
Good afternoon, Chair. I missed the question.
Commissioner Smith?
My question had... My question had to do with egress from onto Old Pecos when you turn right and then how, how does the final formulation of the U-turn in front of Old Pecos Cafe, I think is where it is, what is the formulation there?
Madam Chair, Mr. Smith? The city's traffic engineer, Wilson and Company, created the vast scope of the traffic site. And so at the last meeting, the developers' engineer described what that process is. They look at levels of service of the intersections that they were asked to study, site distance. I think he did look at turning radius for doing U-turns at all of the downstream intersections that we asked them to study. They looked at bicycle pedestrian access to the site, and so all of the criteria is described in the TIA that the city's traffic engineering consultant reviewed and sent back with comments, and all of the criteria for national traffic engineering standards are met. I'm not sure if you're asking me to pull those up and go through them because they're quite technical, but all of those details have been looked at, the scope was looked at, site distance, turning radius, delay time, whether a access, a separated deceleration lane would be required, I believe there was in this case, based on queuing to turning in and out. I think a right turn in is the only thing permitted, there's no left turns out of the intersection at Old Pecos Trail. All of those criteria have been given to the developer, approved, and the, their traffic engineer gave a very detailed analysis last week, a good 10 minutes, and it was reviewed by the city's traffic engineering team and it, it's all been met and approved. So there's nothing outstanding that would be a red flag for this committee with respect to traffic operation.
My, my, I memory of it is that there was a, what I would have called a he said, she said element to that conversation in which the question of traffic volume, when the studies were done, et cetera, et cetera, there were two, there were two distinct views, not as to whether the numbers that were counted were accurate or inaccurate. They were accurate, but were they counted at the right time and at the right time of year, et cetera, et cetera.
Well, they were counted, I believe, in November of last year, and, you know, so certainly it was post what we all went through. I don't know exactly when, but timing is something we, you know, we, we have to have them, we, we take these applications as they come in and they do their counts at an appropriate time, school was on, you know, we look for things like that, like we might ask them to delay things based on school operations, et cetera, but if you're asking globally about the pandemic, it was post-pandemic that the traffic was counted, and I believe the question of traffic projection and estimating for future came up, and it was conservative, the growth was conservative to what the trend is in the area based on a 10-year traffic data that's collected by the Metropolitan Plating Organization. So if you look at the trend of traffic in that corridor, the projected future growth that was modeled was conservative. So, you know, it just goes back to, I don't think traffic operation based on what the city asked the developer to, to provide is problematic.
Mr. Pava, please, hold a motion.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In the matter of case 2022-5063, motion to recommend approval to the governing body of the rezoning of 2200 Old Pecos Trail.
Is there a second? I, I am sorry, you cannot, public hearing is now closed. I, I am sorry, no, we are not taking comments from anyone who is not city staff or a party in this case. Sir, I will ask that you either sit down or you leave the room, please. Thank you. We have, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion from the commission before we call for a vote? Commissioner Marata?
I have one brief comment I'd like to make. Trying to feel out what my role is here and I, trying to keep comment to a minimum in that role, but I'm just going to offer a brief point, which I, I completely understand, Commissioner Inojos Fall, your feeling of how can this be affordable if it's $700,000? The only thing I will add to that, that I believe is context to it, is the housing market in Santa Fe is an aggregate of all of the available properties. So if, if something is larger, if these lots are all larger than what is being proposed, they will, generally speaking, be more expensive. So, at least in my view, $700,000 on these lots would actually be cheaper than what would probably be there without this.
Commissioner Marata? Any additional discussion before we call for a vote? Melissa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Inojos Fall?
No.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava?
No.
So that's three to three. Oh, who are those? Oh, it's a time, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Melissa. My vote is yes.
Thank you, the motion has been approved.
Do we have a motion on the second case on this same case?
I'll make a motion to approve case 2022-5064, 2200 Old Pecos Trail preliminary plat. Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. I would like to offer an amendment.
It's in discussion of the motion table.
Thank you. To condition that approval, builders not coming back to build, to request the building of a second story on that property.
So that would involve a condition to require the limitation to one story. Commissioner Lucero, is your motion acceptable?
Yes, I can agree with that.
And the second?
Yes.
Okay, any additional discussion? Not, Melissa, can we have the roll call, please?
Okay, Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Inojos Fall?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava? The motion has been approved.
Thank you, and thank you for everyone who was here for this case this evening. Moving us on to our new business, case 2022-5203, 1840 Paseo de la Conquistadora subdivision. If you could please not spend too much time being noisy, we do have additional business this evening, thank you. I believe we are ready for a staff presentation on this case.
Good evening, Miss Chair, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Lanny McCully. Just a quick introduction, if that's okay. I have been employed with the City of Santa Fe for 14 years, eight of those with the Landuse Office, seven were in Historic Preservation Division. I am now transferred over to planning team where I was promoted to platter senior in May. I'm looking very forward to working with you guys. This is case number 2022-5203 for 1840 Paseo de la Conquistadora subdivision. Santa Fe Hybrid Homes LLC is the applicant. They are requesting permission to subdivide a 0.8883 acre lot in an R5 district, which is residential for five blooming units per acre.
Ms. McCully, can you get a little bit closer to the mic so we can be sure to hear you?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
They're looking to subdivide into four lots per section 14-3.7, which is the subdivisions of land. The property is within the River and Trails Archaeological Review District. The Landuse Department is recommending approval of the preliminary subdivision plat subject to the conditions of approval in this report and all technical corrections in exhibit A. One motion will be required in this case to either approve or deny preliminary subdivision plat subject to conditions of approval and technical corrections in this report. However, the staff would like to make a change to condition number two. So this condition currently reads that HOA documents shall include designation of responsibility to the proper's, property owners for drainage facilities, maintenance, gravel drive, retail maintenance, retaining wall maintenance, and sidewalk maintenance. After our conversations with the applicant regarding the complications and failures of HOAs in smaller subdivisions, we decide we would like to change the condition to read. The two proposed drainage ponds on lots C and D will be replaced with four separate drainage ponds on each of the four lots, which will be maintained by the individual lot owners. The applicant will prepare a driveway maintenance agreement stating that the costs to maintain a shared driveway over lots A and B will be shared by the owners of lots C and D. The agreement will also state that each lot owner is responsible for the maintenance of drainage ponds, retaining walls, and sidewalks located on the owner's lot as a result, and HOA is not required. Just a little additional information, we did have, in the E&amp;N, the applicant had offered to provide public access path to the Santa Fe River, and they have decided not to do that based off of liabilities for that route. So this is the lot, can you hear me see that? Okay. You can see the house in the background is actually on the other side of the river, and then there's a lot on either side that both have fences. In the aerial, you can see the desired paths that people have been using over the years. This lot right here has actually now been developed, and with that development, they managed to cut off some of those desired paths. So this lot has not actually traveled as frequently, but they do now have, right here is a trail that goes down just before this property and goes down to the river. This is the trail that leads down to the river that's just to the west of the lot, and then this is actually the back of the lot. You can see that's a 10-foot drop. So we, the applicant decided it was too risky to have people trying to climb down that. So the approval criteria under 143.7C1, all five of those criteria have been met. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. McCully. Are there any clarifying questions for staff before we move on? And there will be, of course, an opportunity later, seeing none at this time. Does the applicant have anything to present?
Okay, I will swear you in, sir. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, and please speak into the...
Yes, my name is Arch Sprou, S.P.R.O.U.L. I am the owner of Virginian Designer Builder Inc. I'm the developer, designer, and builder in Santa Fe, and in this capacity, working for the last 21 years, I've built about 120 homes in Santa Fe. Although my biggest accomplishment is that I'm the developer for Cachina Ridge subdivision, neighborhood of 82 homes. I personally designed and then built every home in Cachina Ridge. I run my own finished crews, and so my clients in Cachina are getting the same quality of work that I, I put into my higher-end homes. We've built 25 affordable homes in Cachina Ridge. I made sure that these affordable units were the same quality and were built with the same attention to detail as the full market rate homes. The Santa Fe Community Housing Trust is my partner in Cachina Ridge. I was their first partner that they ever had in this town. And Santa Fe Community Housing Trust has put in, put thousands of people into homes in Santa Fe. What happens with the market rate homes that we've sold on top of the 25 affordables is that this community housing trust would use that money, the profits that we would share to put into first-time home buyers to give them mortgage, help with mortgages, et cetera. So it's been a very good partnership. Over the years, I've won many awards at Cachina Ridge for my designs. In 20, in 2018, I won best master suite and most innovative design in the $400,000 range. And then in '21, I, I won the most innovative design in the energy efficiency award for a house in Monte Serrano. This property at 1840 Paseo de la Conquistadora is zoned R5. It's .88 acres, which, which, which means that with an R5, it can, we can get four houses on it. When we had the E&amp;N meeting, there were some people that were saying that, oh, this is a high density, and I, I wanted to prove that it was, it's not. It's, it's like, what happens is, is when you, the, the final lots, when you do this range... It's like, what happens is when you, the final lots, when you do this range from 1.182 acres to the largest, which is .263 acres. Even the smallest lot at .182 acres is larger than most of the lots in the surrounding neighborhood. Within a block of Paseo de la Conquistadora, there are four lots just on Conquistadora that go from .09 to .14 acres. On Calle Beatriz, a street that runs into Paseo de la Conquistadora in front of the property, there are five lots which range from .10 acres to .14 acres. At this point, I do not know the final selling prices for the homes because I still do not have my final infrastructure cost. Plus, there's a lot of variances in the cost of materials these days. I do know that 20 of the homes that I built in Cachina Ridge will work really well here, and those homes varied from about $330,000 to about $550,000. So there's a good range, and fortunately, it gives me a good variety to offer my clients. But as a master certified green builder, I will guarantee that all these homes will be energy efficient, as well as attractive, and a great addition to the neighborhood. My goal with all the homes that I built in Cachina Ridge and all over Santa Fe County is to provide quality, efficient, and attractive places where people can come home, feel safe, want to have their friends and family there, know their neighbors, and can enjoy the surrounding area. I'm very proud of the fact that the people who bought my homes tell me all the time how much they love them. This is the reason why I became a builder and why, at this age, I continue to do it. This is an infill lot in an established neighborhood, and the designs of the homes will be consistent with all the surrounding homes. We're not asking for an increase in densities, so we're in alignment with the original master plan for this area. Santa Fe has a shortage of homes for people in the middle-income brackets, and this development will provide homes for people in this range where there's an immediate need. So in conclusion, I ask that you approve this, which is a small infill project which will have a minimal impact on the neighborhood and will be a positive addition to the economy by providing middle-income housing. That's it.
Were there any clarifying questions?
I would like to make a comment. Sir, I'd like to thank you for your very credible presentation. I'd like to thank you for not stepping up here to allege that $700,000 homes are just the norm for people in Santa Fe. I'd like to thank you for recognizing the price range that is affordable for the average Santa Fean. I'd like to thank you for doing a good job. Thank you.
I've been here 42 years.
Let me ask, are there any other clarifying questions before we see if there are any comments in public hearing? Go ahead, Commissioner Lozaro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So we're...
These are clarifying questions only. We still need to have the public hearing.
I'll hold off then.
Okay. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to comment on this project, please come forward. And while the member of the public is coming forward, I'd just like to remind those that are attending via Zoom to raise their hands if they wish to speak, and we'll recognize them after this member of the public.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record when you stand up. Michael.
My name is Rick Martinez. 725 Ciro, which is right next to this property. I am president of the Hoya Neighborhood Association, and I do support this project, but there are a couple of things I want to clarify. I built that trail, helped build that trail. I got Santa Fe watershed. I'm hoping the previous owner gave me permission to do that trail there. It's at the edge of his property, but his property line still falls a little further down on the trail, since he's, because I saw the stakes was laid out when they did it. So we have to have, I want to make sure that we do get that part of his, a little bit of his property that's the trails on, part of this project. You know, because he's already denied as the other access trail. So you still have to give us access to this little bit here, this trail to keep a continuous walk. There's a, the trail that goes through La Jolla, that comes down La Jolla Street and the Ciro, they're redoing that, and they're not going to put any more access into it or into the parts, the river and trail coordinator. They're just graveling the La Jolla road, and they're not putting another trail, and even same with Alejandro. So we don't, the only other access that workers, they already give us, unless they create a trail for us, is just all the way up on Paseo de la Conquistadora and Puerto Colon. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that area. This trail here leads to another busque that's on the top there that we maintain, and we keep that for the neighborhoods, for all the people who walk. But I just want to make sure that this new section that we're looking at here is not taking away from us, because we went through a hard time creating that little walkway there, so I want to make sure I get a guarantee from that. And the other thing, too, is, like I said, I do support this project. This could take a lot of fill to bring all that trucks in, and I want to make sure that the trucks that come down with all that dirt does not use, as neighbors have asked me on Alejandro and La Jolla, that we do not have large trucks coming down that road, and I just want to guarantee on that, that we, that those neighbors are protected from heavy trucks. Yeah, so that's going to be a lot. So I don't, the neighbors have asked me to, just to make sure that that doesn't happen. But once again, I really want to make sure that this trail is maintained. Maybe with his help, we can make it a better trail that takes it down to the river. And that's all I want to say, but like I say, I do support the project, and it's a good infill project, because we, I worked on Cabernet East of that project, La Jolla, when La Jolla used to go across the riverbed down on to the other side of the river. I fought that and got that road closed, so I put a lot into those neighborhoods, so I just want to make sure that the walkability, through that connectivity, through that everybody is still there and not shut off. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Staff, is there anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? No, there is not. Thank you. In that case, the public hearing is closed, and I will turn it over to other questions or discussion from the commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Montoya brought up a good point about the social trails that crisscross the lots. Is there, in fact, do we know, is there actually something in writing that dedicates or otherwise reserves public access through the site? And I ask that, frankly, as a point of disclosure, I live about a mile away, and I know very well what you're talking about, Mr. Montoya, about the access there. I'm sorry, Mr. Martinez. So is there something set in writing to reserve these? And I guess the corollary question would be is, for Mr. Sproule, is there any way to modify the proposed design to even allow any kind of access from Conquistadora to the trails that run along that side of the river?
We had a meeting out on the site with the staff.
I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. We had a, yeah, okay, sorry.
We had a meeting on-site with the staff, and the staff, and it says here in the report, staff conducted the site visit and concurred that not only is the easement unnecessary as there is an access to the river to the east and west of the property, but the access at the north edge of the property, where the property of Buzo Santa Fe River is steep and unsuitable for public access. Problem is, is that the portion, there's a 10-foot hill right at the back of the property, and it's not on my property. And the Santa Fe River is, they're redoing and fixing the river all the way along there, but not behind my property. And three doors down on La Jolla, there's an access, and then five doors down on, there's an access. This trail that you're seeing here, that Rick is talking about, is actually on the very far corner of my property, and it will still be there. It's actually on the property behind it, so that trail will still be there. But, you know, it's a liability issue for, you know, because we were out there when we met with the staff at the site. It was right when we'd had all these rains, and it was terribly unstable. And I can't in all consciousness sell something to somebody and then give them liability of people walking through their property onto something that is unstable. If it were part of my property, then I could, you know, build it up and make it safe, but it's not. It's a 10-foot drop there. And with access is three doors down, it's not like people are not going to have an access to it.
Commissioner Pava, do you have any additional questions?
No, that provides the background and context that I was curious about and what you've tried to do, and being familiar with the neighborhood and walking all those trails where I probably shouldn't at this point, the older I get. Yeah, it is a bit precarious. It's fun to go explore that, but it is private property, so, yeah, I appreciate your explanation of that, Mr. Sproule, and also, Mr. Martinez, thank you for...
I'm sorry, Mr. Martinez. We needed to hold a line on this one. Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
If I'm not, that's only, while they're working on the stormwater drains there.
Excuse me, excuse me. I want to end this conversation during the hearing, and I see that staff, I assume, wants to comment on this issue. So during our conversation, there was a hand that was raised in Zoom, Susan Haynes. Would you like to give her the opportunity to speak? Yeah. It was raised during this conversation.
Well, I suppose we might say that we have already somewhat reopened the public hearing. If someone is trying to speak, it seems like it would be fair to recognize them, and so I think we should recognize Ms. Hayes if she would like to make a comment.
Okay, Ms. Hayes, you can speak.
Hi, thank you. It's Susan Haynes, and I just want to say...
Hold on, Ms. Hayes, if you could be sworn in.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do so swear.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Susan Arlene Haynes, H-A-Y-N-E-S, at 712 Calle Beatriz, which is perpendicular to the property under discussion.
Go ahead, Ms. Haynes.
Yes, I just want to say I support, my husband and I both, at 712 Calle Beatriz, just a few steps, really, from the property under discussion. We totally support the building and improvement of that property as has been described. It sounds like the builder, the developer, has been very cautious and covered all bases, so we fully support it. And we're avid hikers on the river trail, and we have no problem finding another access to the trail. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. While the public hearing is still open, Mr. Martinez, did you have any other clarification that the commission should consider at this time? So please keep it as concise as possible. Thank you.
I really would like to follow up, be sure that the kind of fencing they do at that edge of the property, that still leads you down the trail, that part there, I'm not sure what kind of fence is easily put along the off-trail there, people use it. And once again, like I say, those access trails down on, from La Jolla and Alejandro are going to be closed by the, according to the river coordinator, the river trails coordinator, they're not allowing, that trail that goes on the top, you go back, can I move this again? You look at this upper part there, there's a, they did some work up there, they had a slope, and they didn't want to create a walkway up the top, but people started using that walkway, and we created that walkway, because it was kind of dumb not to have a walkway, because this is the only way you can get away from Frenchie Field, from the left-hand side, instead of having to walk on the highway, down the highway trail on the other side. But people are going to still create these trails, and I just want to make sure if we're going to start creating them, you've got to be safe with that. But once again, that's why I'm worried that he, that, since that little bit of that, that little tiny bit of that trail still falls on his property, that he's not going to do close to it. That's one reason I'm bringing that up, because that's the only continuous trail we have. So that's, all I want to make sure is that that stays open for us. And I don't know if I can get a guarantee from them that it is going to stay open, because it still sits a little bit on his property.
All right, thank you. And the public hearing is now closed. Other comments or questions from commissioners? Commissioner Inojas Paul?
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I don't have the case number in front of me. It disappeared from my screen. It stands...
It is 2022-5203.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion before we call for the vote? Melissa?
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Faulkner?
Yes.
Commissioner Inojas Paul?
Yes.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morando?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Thank you. I believe that brings us to staff communications. Any communications from staff this evening?
Chair Lawrence, I don't believe there is. Thank you.
Ms. Lambly?
Chair Lawrence, I'd just like to let the planning commission know that we are going to be having some cases that are going to the governing body. One case in Full Tough Road rezoning will not be going. It was planned for August 31st. Will not be going to the governing body on that date due to a noticing error, so there will be more to that. And then we have other cases as well, and thank you for your efforts. Appreciate it.
Thank you all. Any matters from the commission?
I will, I wanted to say as a note, in terms of the education of the
I will, I wanted to say as a note, in terms of the education of the commission, things have been popping up, and I would love at some point perhaps a brief educational presentation on the open space requirements. I think that would be wonderful for us to have a better understanding of, and I don't think we've recently had an update on water, and that would be wonderful as well. Thank you.
Chair Lawrence, I did speak with Jesse Roach about, you know, when he would be available to come in to, to give a presentation, and I believe we've scheduled the MPO officer, Eric Auny, to come in, I think, on the first of September to give a presentation, and one of the challenges we've been looking at is the, the cases that are coming before the commission over the next several months, Midtown being one, and then South Meadows as well, some large, you know, cases, significant cases. I just want to confirm, you know, timing of those presentations to not make some of our meetings go too terribly long.
Thank you. That is probably even more important, is making sure that we can handle the cases, but we would like, I think, to get education as well.
So I can, if it's the direction of the commission, you know, we can look at, you know, when Jesse would be available, I think he said either, he wasn't going to be available in September, so that's why we got Eric to speak on the transportation issues, and then, but he was going to be available either October meeting, or November meeting, or December meeting, so confirm that up.
Go ahead, Commissioner Pava.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Staff, I just want to make sure you're aware that the American Planning Association New Mexico Chapter is holding its annual conference in Albuquerque, the 26th through 28th of October. There will be planning commissioner training on the agenda, and I believe there is a cut rate for planning commissioners, and I would suggest that perhaps staff look into seeing if there is a budget or a means to afford any planning commissioners who would like to attend, not only the planning commissioner training, but just to get more back on, on the issues, whether they be legal, financial, land use, whatever. It's shaping up to be a very good conference, and it's called Stories of Resilience, so it's about coming back into whatever the next normal is, so I'll leave it at that.
I will research that, and I just do want to let you know that Commissioner Faulkner has her hand up and would like to speak.
Commissioner Faulkner, please go ahead.
All right, I have two issues I'd like to bring up. One is when we look at the, or we hear the South Meadows case, I know I had talked to staff about doing a tour of District Three prior to that hearing, and then possibly having that hearing at the South Side Library to make it easier for people from District Three to attend that hearing, and I just want to, I have a question about what's the status on that and where it's, where it's at as far as accomplishing those two goals?
Yeah, Chair Lawrence, Commissioner Faulkner, thank you for bringing that back up. We, we do have it on the agenda to be, you know, we're looking into holding it down at the South Side Library, working with the librarian there and our IT team to make sure we can hold a meeting down there. I don't believe it's been done with the hybrid option, so we're still airing out those details, but I should have more detail very soon. And the, for the field trip, I can just say, I think today's field trip went really well, and so I think we need to probably nail down some details about, you know, the logistics on that. It probably would be important that we were all in a caravan at the very least, or in one vehicle to do something like that. I'll have to consult with legal and, you know, kind of see how historic's traditionally done that type of thing, but we just want to make sure that the experience of the tour is consistent for all members of the commission, and that, you know, we have kind of an agenda that, to go along with that, I would think. So maybe we can, Commissioner Faulkner, we can talk about what your vision is for that and how we could get that into a reality.
Thank you so much, and I'm more than willing to do anything to help. The other question I had, and I hope I can articulate this, when we are seeing cases that in lieu of is in play, is it possible for us to, in the staff reports, to get some kind of information that would tell us, like, you know, the, the developer is, is buying their way out of, say, 33 units at this much of the lieu of fees, and then what that translates into as far as helping families or low-income populations get into the, into apartments, or how, what is the, what is the difference between what in lieu of, what is paid in lieu of, and what the benefit of in lieu of is? Is that, did I make that clear? I feel like I'm hitting, like, hitting the barn but not the target exactly in how I'm asking the question.
Yeah, Chair Lawrence, Commissioner Faulkner, I, you know, following, I think, our July meeting on the original hearing of the 22 Old Pickles Trail, I did meet with Alexandra Ladd, because there was a number of questions, I think, that were raised at that time, and a lot of misunderstanding around, you know, how these programs are working, and how, who they're supporting, and, and how exactly, and so it was a very illuminating conversation, and I can try to go into some of those details, but, you know, I know that, you know, they have a list of eligible, of, you know, home buyers, that is quite extensive, and, you know, that was, I think, what she was alluding to tonight, is, well, if we have someone on the list that needs a two-bedroom house, that's what we're going to build. So it's very customized, and it's very highly regulated by not only, you know, local and state laws, but the federal government. And so basically, when we talk about a $200,000 house, well, that $200,000 house is going to have a $300,000 or a $400,000 covenant or, or, you know, restriction on it that is held either at the city or more likely at Homewise. And so, you know, that's where that money, I believe, is going in part, for down payment assistance, you know, so the, I don't know if I'm answering your question, but I think that, you know, that's where that money goes, right, is to help with rental assistant, to help with covering, you know, that gap between what it actually costs to build a home now, which I think the average price is 358 a square foot, give or take. So that's where that money goes. It's, it's that public influx to support that, to cover that gap, to make it affordable. So I'm, you know, happy to have Alexandra come back and explain it in much better, you know, detail, but I think.
I understand how, what in lieu of is used for. What I'm trying to get at is when we're think, we're thinking about whether or not a project is using in lieu of to the best interest of the city and the citizens of the city, I need to know what that gap is. Like, I need to know that if they're giving us $400,000, how many families can that help with renters' assistance, or how many families can that help with just putting in an average-sized home? Because right now, there, there's, it's hard, it's hard to wrap your head around the value of in lieu of, because we really don't see project to project. We're not seeing how, what that money translates to in, in, in real life, right? We're, we're told it goes to all these programs, and Alexandra's awesome, and I have faith in what she's doing, I just would like to be able to wrap my head around what it literally translates to. Like, again, if they give $400,000 in lieu of fees, and that comes out to approximately 30 units, how many people can we help with that money? And is that, are we getting the bang for our buck? Like, is the city and the citizens of the city, are they getting the, the most value for the in lieu of program? How, are we leveraging it as effectively as we could be? Because it, when you do, when you do the layperson math, I know on one of the projects, I just did simple math about trying to get, apply renters', the in lieu of fee for the project to getting people into those same apartments through renters' assistance, and the gap was like 33 units that they got out of for the amount of money they paid, but that money could only get 13 families into those same apartments. And so just on that simple level, it, it looks like we could, we could adjust in lieu of a little bit more and leverage it a little bit more towards helping families, especially in the apartment complex sector. So for me to, to feel comfortable, I, I would just like some kind of, something in the report that tells us what, what, how these numbers could play out, not necessarily how they are going to, but something that gives us some kind of formula that makes it easier to understand what value we're getting for allowing in lieu of.
I think there are a few other comments on that. Commissioner Smith first, and then Commissioner Lawrence.
I, I agree with Commissioner Faulkner, and I think, and again, I may not understand this fully, but in the rental analysis that we saw the last time, you're helping 13, and maybe it's a few more, but for one year. And the fact of the matter is what happens the second year. So I think, I really do think that is something that we need to study and think about in terms of creating incentives or regulatory recommendations that balance profit against affordability. And I think, I think her point is very well taken.
Thank you, Commissioner. My only comment would just be that I, I completely agree with Commissioner Faulkner and Commissioner Smith, but the only thing I'll add is, at least from my side of dealing it as an applicant, the developers know pretty much mathematically to the percentage what they're saving when they go to in lieu of, and the biggest reason why is construction cost. Once in lieu of gets broken, oh, it's two issues, once it gets broken from the market rate, then it's not going to be equal anymore, and they're always going to take in lieu of, but the other side of it is them, it's the same thing as a permit fee. If they don't have to prove with a contract, then it will not be the cost that it actually is. It just won't be. And, and that honestly happens with permits too, to a pretty significant degree. That's a separate conversation, but it's the same issue in terms of proving the construction cost. Those two elements, if you tied it to the market and made them show a contract, it would get rid of this issue, I believe, and I'm saying that as the person gets hired to do it. I'm serious.
I suspect as the planning commission, we're going to continue having this conversation over and over and over, and staff should be ready for that until we figure out some other path forward. Any other matters of the commission, and otherwise do we have a motion to adjourn? I wanted to do that.